Good evening everyone and welcome to our meeting of May 19th. Please stand and say the pledge. Mark, you lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we live.
She did really good. We could hear her well up here. Need approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 5th. Any motion please? Motion please?
Williams for our board will make that motion.
Support or buy? We're playing with the microphones tonight folks.
Me? I'll support how you do.
On favor? Any opposed? Motion carries? For the record show that we have Denise absent this evening and Mr. Switnowski's absent tonight. Well, we have a lot of nice things happening tonight. Student recognition and high school leaders. We're gonna start with the little kids first. If you folks say you have to leave because there's so many, feel free to leave. And we don't want you to leave, but if you get tired and the kids get restless, feel free to leave. We're gonna have the board members come up and help. We had the board members come up. I'm also gonna, I'm gonna try to stay up there as long as I can. I broke my leg a couple months ago. I'm just getting better. But I want to get these awards out so bad, so I'll hold on as long as I can, so. With that, we're gonna start. Mr. Rice, you gonna take over? What members you want to come on up?
Welcome everybody. Whoop, gotta get used to it. Good to see everyone here tonight. A ton of stuff for us to celebrate as a school district. And usually when we have these things, we'll have one or two people come to the board and we'll celebrate. But tonight, we've got some great big things happening over at Kaiser. And a lot of great things happening here at the high school. So we thought we'd have it here so we could host more people, and here you are. So welcome, and we're gonna get things started tonight. You have an agenda. And there's a list in that agenda. We're gonna adjust that a little bit as far as our order goes. So, the first group that I'm gonna have up tonight is Ms. Kelly Greider, the principal at Kaiser Elementary. Come on up Kelly. When the principals or the athletic director that'll be up here in a little while, when they come up, they'll introduce their folks, so you're on.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Greider, principal at Kaiser Elementary. One of the groups at Kaiser that I wanted to celebrate this evening was our Unified Soccer Team. So for those of you wondering what unified means, we take our Gen Ed population of our students and our special ed students that need a little bit more support with playing sports, and they work together as a team. So it's amazing, our second year, our very first year playing, we were like, ooh, the first game. They didn't know where to go, what to do. By the second game, we're like, they actually scored. This year, the first game looked like where they left off last year. So they were, they actually scored one to zero, the very first game. So we played two games. Our games were held last week. One was on Tuesday, one was on Thursday. And I want to thank all of our families that came out and supported us to watch our students, to motivate them. It's not about winning, it's about supporting each other and helping each other. So I have many staff that I want to recognize tonight because without the staff being there to coach the students and parents to be there to coach and help, we could not have a Unified Soccer Team. So I'm gonna start by calling up the staff first. Alright, so we have Kaitlyn Ashbaugh. And Kaitlyn Ashbaugh is one of our special ed teachers at Kaiser. And we have one of our parents, Richard Dockery was one of our coaches. Come on up Richard. I don't think Jessica Gura could be here today, but she is our OT that's in the building. And she's in our building part-time, but she wanted to be a part of the team too. So Jessica, Kaylee Lorenson, my speech and language teacher. Alex McIlvery, my resource room teacher. Cheryl Robish, retired special ed teacher that just keeps coming back every year. We love having her. Jennifer Warwick. Now she did not get injured kicking in the game. This happened at home when she was doing some yard work. But she's still here. And Sandra Williams. Alright, we're gonna call up, the most important part of the team is the students. So the students in Gen Ed were selected by their teachers, and the special ed students were also selected. I'm not sure if they're all here tonight, so we'll just call them up and see who is here. Dimitri Adams, I did not see tonight. Kyla Alderson, I did not see. Landon Dockery, whose father was the coach. Bryce Dodson, I know Bryce is here. Alexander Duquette, I saw Alex. I'm not sure if Alex is gonna want to come up. Maybe mom can come up with him. Here he comes. Kai Fowler, who is not here this evening. Frankie Gallagher. We also had Brexton Hardester, who is not here this evening. Amber Heisner. Bella Howard. No, I did not see Emma Jack yet, but she's been telling me since this morning she's coming today. Is Emma Jack here? She was wearing the shirt and everything today. Do we have Peyton Heisner? And Haley Heisner. The whole family played this year. Alright, and then we had Joshua LaPointe, who is not here this evening. Ryan, go ahead and clap. Ryan McGlathery, who is not here. Mevin Muaw, who's not here. Jackson, and I was trying to practice to say his last name, and nobody on the stage knew how to say it. They said, "We just call him Jackson P." But Jackson P. is not here today. Ariana Prossisi, who is not here. Cody Robinson Wilson, who is not here. And Bentley Woodward. Alright, and that is our team. Congratulations. Were we having them tell who they're here with? Okay, okay. Alright. Oh, one big picture here, I'll give you this. Yep, hit the next one. Yeah, dropped it. Is that one? Alright, thank you Kaiser. Yep. WhatsApp? Alright, our next group that I would like to introduce at Kaiser this year, a little bit of a smaller group, but they were still pretty mighty. It was our Science Olympiad Team. Again, this was our second year of doing Science Olympiad. So I'm going to recognize the coaches first. Mrs. Claus, I want to thank Mrs. Claus for leading the team. She is my kindergarten teacher at Kaiser. Come on up. We also had, in order to do Science Olympiad, you need to have coaches. And it's very difficult to find people that can volunteer their time to coach. So we had to reach out to the high school. And we had Justine Brun, who is a Roseville High School student, that was one of our coaches, and she's here. Also, Ms. Claus kinda used her resources, and one of her kindergarten students has a brother, Bradley Dickinson, who was using some time to coach, but I don't think he's here tonight. Katie Jack was another coach who is not with us this evening. Megan Richards. And Tiara Tate, who are not here this evening. Let's see which students. Albany James, she wasn't sure if she could make it today. So Albany James, she's here, alright. Come on up. This was Albany's second year. And I am proud to say, at her first event, she did, for having a team of only about five students, it's really hard to place when you don't have much of a team. But she managed to come in fifth place at our first event. Emma Jack, who could not be here this evening. And Madeline Jack, her sister. Laura McCurry, come on up Laura. Aria Page was another member. I don't think she's here with us this evening. And one last one, who competed in his second year, who's not here with us tonight, is Max Washburn. Alright, so congratulations and thank you to our Science Olympiad Team.
Thank you. Great job Kaiser, well represented. Thank you Kaiser staff, way to go. Kaiser students, how exciting. And Kaiser parents, how proud. At this time now, I am going to invite up Mr. Keith Marzak. He is our district athletic director. He runs all the athletic programs in the district, at the two middle schools and at the high school. And he has, he has several things. Some great performances this year. Individual and team performances. So I will hand it off to Mr. Marzak to introduce those. Unless he doesn't want to speak. Mr. Marzak shy. Well, there he is.
I am very shy. I'm gonna test my old gym teacher voice. I don't wanna talk too loud in the microphone. Our first group that we're here, is that loud Joe? Our first group. Phys ed, sorry. I apologize. I'm only a gym teacher when I wanna do stuff. But it didn't work tonight. I'm up here, no, I'm kidding. Our first group that we like to recognize is our Unified Basketball Team. So if I could have coaches and athletes, please join me on stage. I would like to first introduce our coaches. Coach Stanley, who's one of our CI teachers. Ms. B, or as my daughter who graduated last year, now we refer to her as Jennifer, so Ms. B. And we also have Mr. Kovak. And then Coach Snow, who could not be here tonight. Those are our four coaches. Just to give you a little brief history, this is our second year doing Unified Basketball. Last year, we went undefeated. This year, we went undefeated. And these kids and coaches had a great experience and opportunity this year because they got to play at Little Caesars Arena. They got to play at the Breslin Center at halftime of the state finals. And then the real reason why we're here tonight, we've got some real hardware to hang out or hand out. Our kids went to states and won their division. So as an athletic director, my first state champ is our Unified Basketball Team. And we are very proud of them. And we have some very special championship rings to hand out. So I'm gonna turn it over to Coach Stanley to introduce her players.
Alright, so the athletes that I'm very proud of is Summer Weathers. Next, we have Daryl Brown. Then we have Austin Sawyer. Then we have Kaia Thomas. Next, we have Angel Sanchez. And we have Julian Williams. And last up here, we have Mason Borisak. And then the ones on the team that have, are not here tonight is Desmond Strauton, Eric Slater, Sean Jones, Jermaine Davis, Xavier Pollan. And I think that's it. Alright, good job guys.
Daryl was probably our leading scorer, and he's graduating this year. So we're working on an NIL deal to try to bring him, try to bring him back next year. We'll be looking at some Panther Den funds maybe to bring him back. Our next group, we have two, two of our wrestlers who participated in the state finals. So if I could have Darnell Boyd, Jaden Williams, Coach Baker. Coach Wilson here. Coach Baker, if you could come join me on stage, please. Throughout Darnell's years of wrestling at Roseville, he has garnered numerous accolades and well-earned titles and recognition of his dedication. He triumphed as the state Claret Tournament Champion, earned title of Most Valuable Wrestler. Additionally, has claimed the MAC Blue, Gold, Silver Championship along with being the district champion. Darnell is ranked third in regional and sixth, so he placed sixth in states at the state tournament Ford Field. Boast an impressive record of 37 wins and 10 losses. This year, he was honored with the First Team All-County Selection and named to the Dream Team, which is the best across division in the county. I had the privilege of being at this board meeting last year when the young man sitting next to him was a state runner-up. And I remember saying, "We're gonna be back here next year and recognizing, honoring you and recognizing you as a state champ." Darnell, expect the same thing out of you next year, alright brother? And before I forget, and Coach Baker tries to double-leg me, I'd be remiss to not mention that these two young men are two of our wrestlers that are members of a all-state, all-academic wrestling team with a team grade point average of 3.4. Jaden Williams. During Jaden's wrestling career at Roseville, he's garnered numerous prestigious titles and accolades. These includes being the Detroit Catholic Central Champion, Most Valuable Wrestler. He also claimed the MAC County Championship Title and Most Valuable Wrestler Honors. Additionally, Jaden has been recognized as the MAC Blue, Gold, Silver Champion and Most Valuable Wrestler along with being crowned district and regional champion as well as a state champion. Impressively, he boasts an outstanding record of 53 wins, zero losses. But wait, there's more. He holds the MHSAA title for most tech falls in a high school wrestling season, achieving 49. This year, Jaden has been named to the First Team All-County, including the Dream Team. Again, is the best of all the county across all divisions. Congratulations gentlemen. Next, we would like to recognize one of our bowlers, Jillian Wayne. If Jillian and Coach Rolder could come to stage, please. Throughout Jillian's senior year as a bowler for Roseville, she's achieved remarkable accolades. She was top 10 qualifier at the Dakota Cougars Classic, a top 15 qualifier in Macomb County Championships, and secured a top 16 finish in the MAC White Singles. This year marked her second time earning MAC White All-County Awards and her second selection to the Macomb All-County 13. Additionally, she finished sixth at the regionals and qualified for a state championship in 2025. Jillian, congratulations. Our last group that we would like to recognize is our girls varsity basketball team. If I could have players and coaches, please join me. Before we get to the accomplishments of the basketball team, I do have some bittersweet news. Coach Connie has been in the program for a while. She's served as a varsity assistant, a JV coach. It's sad, but I'm happy for her. She has been named the new head basketball coach at Warren Fitzgerald. So Coach Connie, coming from the Coach Houghton coaching tree, will be moving on to take on her own program. And we do get to play her in division, so we will beat her twice. Each year, to remember where you came from, okay? The Roseville Varsity Girls Basketball Team excelled in the 24-25 season, clinching the MAC Gold Division Title with an impressive league record of nine wins and one loss. Overall, they achieved a remarkable season tally of 17 wins against four losses. Their success was a testament of their hard work, dedication, and credible teamwork. Each player contributes significantly showcasing not only their individual talents, but also their ability to work cohesively as a unit. The team's coach, Coach Houghton, by the way, was named Coach of the Year in the MAC Gold. Played a critical role in guiding the team to victory. As they celebrate their season, the team looks forward to the challenge of next year, eager to defend their title and continue building on their legacy of excellence.
Alright, how's everybody doing? Just wanna announce a few players that are here tonight. We're missing a couple. But we have a couple super sophomores. Number 32, Michaela Raw. Number five, Asai Stewart Ellis. And we're missing Vanessa and Chelsea, but just really quick about the sophomores. A couple years ago, the state came out with a new rule that girls could play five quarters a night. So they would play two quarters at the JV level and then play three quarters at the varsity level every single night. So they put in a ton of work. We're very, very proud of our sophomores. So nice job. Alright, we're missing our junior Kamari Lang, so we'll go right to our seniors. We'll start with number four, Melissa Kirkendall. Melissa was named by the Basketball Coaches Association of Michigan. She received the Team First Award, which meant that she put the team first always, so congratulations Melissa. We also have number two, Rihanna Reeves. Rihanna was named MAC Gold All-League. She was named All-County Fourth Team, All-County Defensive Team, and by the Detroit News and Detroit Free Press is All-East Honorable Mention. And also, she was our Defensive Player of the Year for our team. And she just recently signed a scholarship to go play at Rochester Christian University. Number 12, De'anni John. De'anni was also named MAC Gold All-League, Fourth Team All-County, so the All-Defensive Team for the county. And she was the Detroit News, Detroit Free Press All-East Honorable Mention. Nice job De'anni. We're missing Kiana Scorpio tonight, but she was the MAC Gold MVP. She was First Team All-County, Top 10 Player in the County, Third Team All-Detroit News, Free Press, All-East, and she averaged double-double and was our Team MVP, but she couldn't make it to. Lastly, Miko Barbie, number 21. For the second year in a row, Miko was named All-MAC Gold. She was All-County Second Team, Detroit News, Free Press, All-East Honorable Mention, and she also averaged double-double. 12 points, 10 rebounds a game. And I'm sorry, I forgot to mention De'anni signed. She's playing college basketball at Wayne County Community College. So just really quick about this team. I'm super proud of this team, super proud of our coaches. Connie has been amazing with us for 11 years. Sad to see her go, but Connie is the brains of the operation, very, very smart, very gifted when it comes to basketball. She is amazing. So thank you Connie for all of your years. And then Asia Williams, class of 2013 from Roseville High School. One of our favorite players. We coached back in the day. She coached the JV team to a 13-3 record. Asia did an amazing job this year, so congratulations. Alright, this, this team, 17 wins, like Mr. Marzak said, that's tied for the most in program history. Most points per game in program history. They averaged 55.2 points per game. And they did it on the defensive end too. Top three in the total county for defense. And most importantly, they were named All-State, All-Academic. So thank you for your support. We appreciate you.
One more time for the girls basketball team. Way to go, girls!
At this time, we are going to be honoring a lot of different people here at the high school, so our, our master of ceremonies for that is going to be none other than our very own Principal, Mr. Jason Button.
It's a very fun night, full of lots of celebration, and a lot of great, great things that happened here throughout the year at Roseville High School that we are very proud of. And I am very proud tonight to introduce a wide variety of leaders that we have in our building. The individuals that will be coming on this stage tonight, both our students and staff, absolutely are leaders in this building. They all go above and beyond to create opportunities for students, for our students to embrace those opportunities, and really have a chance to showcase their skills and shine in different ways than just normally that you might have in a classroom. And I'm deeply grateful for these students and these staff, for all that they do to contribute to Roseville High School. So, we will start with our band, and I'd invite our band director, Mr. Daniel Cheshire, to come up here. And I will turn it over to Mr. Cheshire to introduce the leaders of the Roseville High School Band Program.
I just want to, I just want to say how great it is, how much support I've seen and heard from everybody in here tonight, for all of the people who came up before the band program. Roseville is a great place to work, and I see the love in the community from the students and the community and the, and the family and the community. So, Roseville is a fantastic place to be, y'all. And then, before I bring up the, the student leaders, just a, some, a few words about them. They're just, they're the first people that are at rehearsal, they're the last ones to leave, they're always planning ahead. They've given their time and energy and shown leadership through service and passion and commitment. So, I'm very immensely proud of these young people that have led us to all their, our great accomplishments this year and have built a good foundation for the legacy to continue through that. So, without further ado, we have our section leaders, Justine Brun of the Low Brass and Reed Section. We have Nevin Canet, our Senior Drum Major. Daniel Dweilancid, Trumpet Section Leader. Leilani Dweilancid, our Assistant Drum Major. Luke Hubbard, our Drum Line Section Leader. Perseus Hutton, our Clarinet Section Leader. Rebecca McGee, our Flute Section Leader. Peyton Redford, our Alto Saxophone Section Leader. And Faith Tucker, our Color Guard Section Leader. These students are not only the section leaders for marching band, but they're the heart and soul of the whole operation, and they're just, they're, they're fine, young people. This represents an investment of their time and energy, but also, family's your time and energy and the community's time and energy, and it's paying us dividends. These are fine humans that are going to do great things in the world. They're already doing great things, and we're, I'm so happy to have had them here with us, so.
Next, I'd ask Ms. Andrea Burns to come join us. We have a changing of the guard in our National Honor Society sponsors, and Ms. Burns represents part of that change, as she and Ms. Colius will be taking over our National Honor Society next year. And so, in her first official duty, I'd like to have her introduce just our officers for National Honor Society.
Thank you. So, I should say that all of our members work really, really hard. We have a lot of pretty lofty standards for our kids. We base everything on our pillars of character, leadership, service, and scholarship. And we had three main leaders, the President, Vice President, and Secretary that we'd like to honor tonight. So, if I could have our Secretary, Rebecca McGee, come on up, please. Nevin Canet is our Vice President. And Brian Blackman is our President. And that's it. These are our wonderful people.
Next, I would ask Ms. Sarah Drewan, our Journalism and Yearbook Advisor, to join me on stage. If you are a music teacher like Mr. Cheshire, your work, your product, what you do in class is always on display for the public to see. That's not the norm in most other classrooms. Ms. Drewan also has her work on display every year as her students do an outstanding job, not only publishing our Panther Prowl, but producing our yearbook every single year. And this year's yearbook is no exception to the outstanding quality and effort that goes into it. So, I'm happy to turn it over to her to introduce her editors, who really put in an awful lot of hard work this year.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Button. I appreciate that. We just started our yearbook distribution today, in fact, so we will continue that through the week. Creating the yearbook, this is my sixth book, which I cannot even believe it, it's gone so fast, along with my career. But creating the yearbook, many of the things that we are talking about tonight are what we cover, and that can't be done without a wonderful staff and editors who are willing to jump in. Creating a yearbook is a pleasure and a pain for many reasons, getting that coverage, meeting deadlines, making sure you use the right pictures, all of those things. So, obviously, I could not do it by myself, so I'm very fortunate to have a group here tonight to recognize. So, let's start with Jillian Wayne. She is our Editor-in-Chief. And Jillian is unique because she's been with the program for four years, so since she was a freshman in Journalism 1. Next, Faith Tucker, our Managing Editor. Faith threw her whole heart into things last year, and you would think she's been around for four years as well, worked super, super hard. Next, Percy Hutton. One of our three copy editors, and when I say they have a title, everybody jumps in and does a whole menagerie of things to get the yearbook done. After that would be Adrian Harris, another one of our copy editors. Because I so appreciate their fine writing skills, it really is something that we need. And then, Jada Jenkins, our Junior Copy Editor. Who has already been told, look out next year, because it'll be a big year for her as a senior as well. So, this is our group, and we wanted to present our books to you tonight, so you can have your books. They are there, yeah. Jillian, do you want to show everybody what the cover looks like? It's beautiful, came out really beautiful, has the 100 on it. Really proud of it. Thank you.
Mr. Button. 100th year, this is a special one, so thank you so much for putting this together.
Next, I would ask Mr. Bob Spitka and Ms. Kristy Nickel to join us on stage to introduce the members of a club that I think is sort of a hidden gem here at Roseville High School, probably one of the coolest clubs that, that we have, that we would love to see more and more students involved with. It is, like I said, absolutely a hidden gem with what they do, the things that they do in, in competition, our Rest Robotics Club. She told me I'm talking here. So, Rest Robotics, we are a after-school engineering competitive robotics club. We have a really good, strong set of kids who've dedicated multiple years to kind of do some really, really cool things here in Roseville, just giving us a sense of what we got done just this year. We took first place in Innovative Engineering, second place in Engineering Journaling, we took a finals alternate in a first robotics competition, we took first place in a underwater IVD engineering program, and the list goes on and on and on. I don't want to bore you guys, but we have some really important members we'd like to recognize. I don't know if they're all here tonight, hopefully. We have Nathavia Triska. Here she is. Like to recognize her for her underwater innovative vehicle design. She has been with the underwater innovative design since freshman year. We have Luis Gomez. Luis has been working on multiple things. We'd like to recognize him for his autonomous IVD, but he also has been working very hard in our V2X, which stands for Vehicle to Anything Program. We also have Sumner Hall. I think he's working tonight, unfortunately. Sumner, we'd like to recognize him for his first robotics and programming, but also his ability, that he's been working with our autonomous IVD program and lots of other things. But, yeah, good kid. Is Stockton Hall here? Nope. Stockton, Sumner's brother, is new to us this year, but he has really stepped up as an underclassman, working with our Mini Innovative Vehicle Design Challenge Program. We look forward to having him for a few more years. He's got really good things to come with him. Colton Masterson? Colton, I believe, has a baseball game tonight, but we'd like to recognize him. He's also been with the program for four years, especially for his first robotics and his mechanical expertise. And then finally, we have Franklin Zini. Franklin Zini, we'd like to recognize him for his work with V2X this year, as well along with, because we can only put one name down for these things, along with Alexis Wolgast. I don't know if she's here or not tonight. You can come up. But we've had an amazing group of students working so hard. We've been working basically all year round since October. We finally finished up our last competition just last week, but so much really, really good stuff has happened. So many of these guys can see careers now in engineering and computer science and things like that, and we hope that they're going to really go far. If you have underclassmen, we need them for next year. We have so many seniors graduating, we need you as underclassmen. Come join us. Next, I would like to introduce the captains of our Quiz Bowl Team. Ms. Jamie Sarek is the sponsor of our Quiz Bowl Team. She could not be here tonight, so I will introduce our, our captains. Our Quiz Bowl Team, it is a competitive team. They compete against other schools in the county. They have their season that runs in the, in the winter. If you've ever watched Jeopardy, it's very, very similar to that, except there's a whole team, but they have got buzzers, they are trying to beat each other for answers. Their practices are very, very entertaining to watch. We've at various points in the year, they've practiced against the teaching staff, taken on the teaching staff, they take on each other, and they represent Roseville High School very, very well in competition. So, the captains of our Quiz Bowl Team are Elizabeth Dunlap. And Perseus Hutton. Next, I'd ask Ms. Robin Schultz-Strickland to join us. Ms. Strickland probably runs the most popular club at Roseville High School, our Tabletop Gaming Club. As a testament to its popularity, this is a club that meets every Friday, and after school on Fridays, we fill the culinary dining room, and we have students that are staying until 5:30, 6 o'clock at night to play games with, with one another. And if you think of teenagers, to get them to stay after school on a Friday for hours, it speaks volumes about how much students enjoy this club and the hard work Robin, her husband, and then Mr. Backless put in to creating this opportunity for students. So, Robin, I will turn it over to you to introduce your leaders.
Yeah, as Mr. Button said, we have quite a large group of students every year. This is the third year of the club, and it has grown exponentially every year. We have at least 30 students every week that meet up together to play a variety of board games and a lot of Dungeons and Dragons. And our leaders are elected among the group at the end of the school year for the next year, so that we have time to prepare things. And so, not only are these students that I have a lot of faith in in what they can do and their leadership abilities and community building skills, but they are students that their peers respect to be able to bring that to the club as well. So, I'm going to start with our youngest member of the board, Franklin Zini, who is our treasurer this year. Besides Franklin here, our next person, unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, our secretary, Jackson McAllister. Next on our board, we have Robert Hall, who is our vice president. And finally, our president, who's been our president for two years now, Christian Seifert. And so I just want to say thank you to these students here for all that they do. Have a little token for them I brought as well, some jumbo-sized D20s for them. Since they play such a big role, I thought a big role was only appropriate for what they do and what they bring to the club, and all of the work they do supporting all of the other members and helping to run games, organize things every week, and really be beacons to our school community. So, thank you, guys.
Next, I'm going to ask Mr. Stevens to join me onstage. Mr. Stevens, along with Mrs. Sarek and Mr. Willoughby, run our LINK crew. And our LINK crew is a group of upperclassmen that have chosen to take on every year, helping our freshman class. To give you an idea of what that means, parents, think about what it was like, or what it may still be like, to have a fourteen- or fifteen-year-old living in your home. Mr. Stevens and our LINK crew have taken on that each year, they are going to help shepherd over three hundred fourteen and fifteen-year-olds throughout their freshman year in high school. Quite a daunting task, and they do an excellent job with that. So I'll let Mr. Stevens introduce our LINK crew leaders.
Leaders is an understatement for these five individuals that have been a part of the leadership of the leaders, so to speak. Without them, this program would not run nearly as close as it does, or at least did this year. I'm a coach in the winter, Ms. Sarek, who is a coach for the Quiz Bowl. We are both involved in other things, as well as our other two sponsors. So without their help, this would not run at all. So they're extremely helpful in getting these ninth graders transitioned from eighth to ninth grade and acclimating to our high school life here at Roseville High School. And I just can't say enough how thankful all of us are for them, because again, without them, it would not run at all. So, without further ado, we'll start with our two LINK crew secretaries being Brooklyn Plot and Corbin Williams. Next, we have our treasurer, Ms. Justine Brun. Our VP, Elizabeth Dunlap. And our president, Mr. Avion, or A.J. Johnson. Again, I want to reiterate that these five wanted to lead the leaders that are willingly choosing to spend more of their time with the ninth-grade class, some of the most underappreciated students within the building. And again, they're fantastic. I can't say enough nice things about them. But congrats to all of you five. You deserve this.
Next, I would ask Mr. Rolder and Mr. Kovak to join me onstage. Mr. Rolder, Mr. Kovak, along with Ms. Roush and Ms. Brewer are our sponsors for Student Assembly, which is our student government here at Roseville High School. Student Assembly does an awful lot to participate, increase student participation and just a healthy school culture. They organize our pep rallies. They organize spirit weeks. They organize homecoming. They are neck-deep in prom right now. And these students wouldn't be able to pull this off successfully without the help of our sponsors. And I know our sponsors rely heavily on these leaders that they will introduce tonight.
All right. So if you know anything about me, I'm a big crybaby, so I had to write something down, so I couldn't go off the top of my head. So we'd like to start off by saying this group of leaders about to come up here in Student Assembly put their all into what they did and started this year off with a specific vision in mind. They wanted to strengthen the student culture at our school and bring back a feeling that we haven't seen in a while. This group of leaders worked hard to bring back many events that we haven't seen since before COVID. And each idea, event, and concept they brought to the table turned out to be a huge success and helped improve our school spirit. You can ask any one of these students about to walk up on this stage about their hard work and sometimes very, very, very long nights, and I guarantee that each of them will have a story of the many memories we made this year with each other. So without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Rolder.
We do not cry, Josh. All right. So first, I'm going to introduce our senior class president and vice president. Our senior class vice president is Ms. Brooklyn Plot. And our senior class president for the class of 2025 is Mr. Nevin Canet. And then our leadership roles, we have our secretary, our vice president, and our president. Our Student Assembly secretary this year was Ms. Justine Brun. Our Student Assembly vice president was Mr. Daniel Duhalonsad. And our Student Assembly president was Ms. Faith Tucker.
Next, we have our symphonic and treble choirs. Ms. Mead is our choir director, and she had to leave today for a family issue, so I will introduce our choirs tonight. If you have ever had the pleasure of seeing either of the Roseville High School choirs perform, you have seen some outstanding talent. Ms. Mead pushes these students to excel. Their performance shines through onstage, and they're doing an absolutely marvelous job. So it is my pleasure to introduce the leaders of our symphonic choir first. I'll start with Diamond Harps, who is our alto section leader. Adrian Harris, who is the president of choir. Alfonso Horton, who is the bass section leader. Jazelyn Jackson, who is the soprano section leader. DeAnthony Miller, who is a student leader. Adam Penrod, who is the tenor section leader. And Chloe Younts-Mead, who is a student leader. And I was reminded, if you haven't yet heard our choirs perform, they have their final concert of the season tomorrow night at Roseville Middle at 7:00 PM, and I encourage all of you to attend. And now I would like to introduce our treble choir leaders. Leniza Bailey, vice president. Najee Broden, who's also a vice president. Mariah Francis, costume coordinator. Alasia Smiles, who's also a costume coordinator. And Zakaya Spillers, who is our treble choir president. I'm going to charge. I'm going to charge for this. And to wrap up our student honors tonight, it is my pleasure to introduce all of you to the Class of 2025 Top Ten. These ten students will be the first ones to receive a diploma at our graduation ceremony. In an incredible accomplishment, that's a testament to all of their hard work, every member of our Top Ten has a GPA of 4.0 or higher. I will call our Top Ten up individually. I'll ask them to stay onstage, and we'll recognize the whole Top Ten at once. I'll go through the Top Ten, and I will conclude, actually, with our salutatorian and valedictorian. So first, joining us onstage as a member of the Top Ten, Elise Burr. Jacob Blair. Nevin Canet. Glib Daniel Ushkin. Christian Gunvulson. Brooklyn Plot. Daniel Sikora. Josh Susane. The salutatorian for the Class of 2025, Daniel Duhalonsad. And the valedictorian for the Class of 2025, Alexis Wolgast. Let's give one more big round of applause for the Class of 2025 Top Ten. Congratulations to all of you.
Whoever's left, one more round of applause for those kids in this auditorium. We're going to go around and let the board members have some comments before we recess, so one moment while they say they're coming.
Just congratulations to everyone. Thank you, parents, for all the hard work that you've done over the years to get them everywhere to now receive these awards at the end of their academic careers. And just great job. Keep it up. And let us know what you're doing, you know, in the future out there. We always love to hear what you guys are up to.
It's a wonderful night, and, you know, I always recognize the fact that there's so many kids that are up here multiple times. And the dedication that you put in is just remarkable, and I know that that starts in your home, with your parents, your guardians. So congrats to all. Thank you so much.
Congratulations to everyone here tonight. You guys did an outstanding job. Parents, you should be very proud of the kids. They did an outstanding job. To the staff that helped these kids, you guys are wonderful for helping them. The coaches and so forth. I think we're in real good hands in the future of our country if we have kids like this. We're in good shape. Congratulations, everyone.
I just want to say also, congratulations to all the student leaders, the parents. Thank you for standing behind your children. That's excellent. And I do want to say to some of you, I see you. I see you. Murder Mystery, I remember that. I see all y'all out here. Hairspray, all of that, all the things that you have done. I just think everything is great. Keep doing what you're doing, and don't stop.
Congratulations. Thank you for all of your hard work. Thank you, parents, for all of your hard work with the kids.
Just kind of a repeat what everyone already said. Congratulations to all the students. You worked so hard. Keep up the good work. Parents, thank you so much. And parents and guardians, thank you so much for your commitment to your children. And staff, of course, thank you for your commitment, for your extra time and the hard work that you put in. Congratulations, everyone.
Hands up. Where's my D&amp;D players at out there? I heard that was a big thing, so. Great job, everybody.
I just want to say, we wait for this night all year long. That's the purpose of board members just have meetings once or twice a month. We go to the plays, we go to the concerts, and we see you kids and how well they do. I spent fifty-five days in rehab with my leg thinking, what am I going to do? And I thought, I've got to get to graduation. I got to get to awards tonight. I made awards, and I just got to get to graduation now. It was awesome. And parents, we thank you for all you do for this district. Staff, we couldn't do it without you. And students, we couldn't do it without you either. Congratulations. we couldn't do it without you. And students, we couldn't do it without you either. Congratulations.
First of all, what I'd like to recognize is the fact that there's a place for everybody at Roseville High School. We have arts, academics, and athletes, and they're all represented today, and it shows just the wide diversity of talent that we have in our students, under the guidance of some great teachers and coaches that volunteer extra time and effort to bring out the best in your kids. And I appreciate you doing all the driving back and forth and encouraging them and making education a priority, which opens opportunities for our kids. So together, you can see what we can produce in great students. So thank you.
With that, we're going to take a short recess, because we're going to have the rest of the board meeting. You're welcome to stay for it, but I bet you're going to run to the doors. Thank you, everybody.